To know today that we do.
It's like we're on.
Something to look forward to.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call to order the Salina-Sleane County Space Study for February 10th, 2025.
And I will call the meeting of this study session of the Sleane County Board of Commissions. Will the clerk please call the roll? Or note all those in attendance?
Okay.
Yes. And I will turn that over to Phil and Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. If we could bring up the PowerPoint. So today, the purpose of being here is to present to you the results of a study that has been ongoing for the better part of the last year. Both city commissioners and county commissioners have participated in charrettes along the way and have been a part of this process. Today is the culmination of that process, but it's really the beginning of a discussion. And so we're not expecting anybody to make any decisions today. This is just the presentation, and we'll be having further conversations about this report and tweaks we might want to do to it over the coming days and months. If you could advance for me? So I thought we would just start out by a little discussion of why we are here, the background. Most of the space needs at the current time are county needs, the Health Department in particular, and the lack of space on the county side of the City-County Building. But there are also some opportunities to work with the city, and of course, we've just taken the approach of keeping the band together, as it were, as we've been for about the last 60 years.
And I think that, much as Phil alluded to, we don't face the current shortage. They have a real dearth of conference space on the county side. Right now, where most of our space challenges occur are in the Police Department. We'll talk about that a little bit more in depth. We can address most of those issues, but not all of them, and that's another one of the factors that we plugged into this when looking at it. Go ahead. So why does the city care? So I think it is important, coming at it from this perspective, to try to keep the city and the county together within the same building, and at the same time, understanding that the county has a lot of needs that are not being met. So we want to work with the county, understand that they're going to be needing some additional space, which is just frankly not available currently in this building for them. And I think it also helps streamline the functions overall for members of the public to have the city and the county located together. And so I think that that's, while you may not be able to directly quantify it, it is an important aspect for the public to be able to go to one building. We even see it now with the county moving some of their offices because they had to due to the shortage of space. And so now people sometime with permits, as we all know, sometimes they get confused and they end up having to go to other places rather than just this building. And so that's kind of an intangible but an important factor. This is, this is an important part of downtown. You know, our downtown has been very successful all the way around, and this is an important component of it. So we really wanted to take a long-term look at this and really a strategic look at it, not just a year or two or even three years, short-term look. And so, you know, this is going to be something which is going to be a very long time in the planning if it goes forward, but we wanted to take that long-term look rather than just addressing short-term needs. And this also gives us a chance to resolve some other issues that have occurred over this entire timeline with the city and the county sharing and trading and ad hoc approach to who owns this, but we've got a lease on this, and it's truly business sometimes to keep track of who owns what and who's leasing from what. And we run into that same thing in the fairgrounds even in the past. So this may be an opportunity to get some clarification on that and to avoid that piecemeal approach, which in some cases, that has been the approach the city is taking. I refer you to General Services for that. And so we wanted to really kind of avoid that piecemeal approach. Go ahead and go to the next slide. The big factor for the city is really Memorial Hall. This is a building that, you know, we took the input from the charrettes and from everybody else, and everybody says, save Memorial Hall, save Memorial Hall. And that's, that's important, but as we'll talk more in a minute, we've been waiting for a long time for somebody to ride in on a white horse and save Memorial Hall, and so far, it hasn't happened. Usually what happens is they say, it's a great building, I love the building, we only want to rent a small part of it, and by the way, could you maintain it and rehab it for us? And the answer to that is no, because the costs are very prohibitive. Memorial Hall is still very structurally sound. It has that basically almost indestructible concrete from the 1920s, unlike a lot of modern concrete. I had a concrete pad for my driveway poured two years ago, and it's already peeling up, whereas the concrete in Memorial Hall is still in amazing shape for something 100, 100-plus years old. It is going to require a large amount of investment to get it up to snuff. And frankly, while the boiler is still functional, it has been deactivated. So the more this building sits without any heating in the winter and anything else, the quicker it's going to deteriorate. And eventually, it's going to get to the point, right now, because of the size and structure of the building, it's very difficult for any business to go in because they look at it and they say, great building, love it, but it's a, you'd almost have to build a building within a building. And so it's much more attractive for them if they're going to take an existing space that doesn't require that amount of remodeling or to do a new build out in an open field because then they don't have to do the building in a building. And like I said, we've had a lot of interest, but so far, no one is really came forward. And I know the city manager has given a lot of tours of this. I've given several tours, and so far, while there's a lot of interest in the building, there hasn't been any significant advancements towards doing that. I think that even if we do find a developer who is interested in developing Memorial Hall, which I think would be great, it's going to be important to tie them to a timeline. As somebody who's gone through this process with a public building, I cannot tell you how many times I've seen a developer buy or acquire a building, and then they never can get financing, they never, it's a litany of things, and it just continues to sit there. So I think if there is a developer that ever does come into being to develop Memorial Hall, there probably should be a timeline on them with requirements along the way so that we don't just continue on this slow deterioration of the building. And then, you know, once the building gets to the point where it can no longer be saved, then you're looking at demolition. And that's going to be, not only is it going to be expensive, but it's going to be very sad to lose such a historically important and building, which is obviously a lot of people have wanted the city and the county to maintain. Go ahead, and so on this one, our space needs from the city's perspective really is focused mainly on the Police Department right now for our current needs. Like I said, the county has a lot of needs, space needs. We don't face those currently in the City-County Building. One of the things we've been doing, I've been working closely with Troy Reiner, the Facilities Department, and with the Police Department to come up with a plan to basically reorganize our existing Police Department. The evidence, it's a secure area, so they don't like to give tours of it, but the evidence that we have over at the Police Station is really completely inadequate for what they have. I mean, they have large amounts of evidence they need to secure, be it drugs, firearms, I even saw a rototiller over there. So they have a wide variety of things that they store in evidence, and frankly, these old former jail cells are just totally inadequate for that. Now, the good news is, in regards to the evidence, is we've started and we're planning to bring this before the City Commission in about a month with a cost estimate. It's a plan to be able to address some of those current needs. We can address about 70% of the needs of the Police Department right now, but we can't address all of them without additional space. And the only way we get additional space is either from the Municipal Court or from where the court service is in, and we'll talk about that more in a minute. The detectives are really, even under our revised plans, still going to be lacking space. And while we do have a nice training facility down south and it has a classroom, we don't have even a large briefing or a training room over at our existing police facility across the way. Again, we can address some of those, and I'll talk some more about those, but we won't be able to address all of them without some additional space for the Police Station. And this again is really looking at long-term needs, not just one, two, three, or five years, but 20, 25, 30 years. Doesn't mean that they will be the same and they couldn't change, but we wanted to at least take that long-term look. And I think that that's good enough.
So then, moving on, so there's, of course, the city and the county, but there's also a third entity that's involved in this building in particular, which is the building authority. And so in addition to the county's needs, the city's tie-in, why does the building authority have an interest in this? Well, for one thing, we're talking about the future of this building. Will this building be a joint city-county use facility? Will it transition into something different? Will there need to be an expansion or addition to this building? What do we do about security issues? We've already faced an instance where we had to bring an item to the building authority to do more security on the first floor as we've moved more judicial functions down here. Parking, the folks who did the study for us, the architects, identified some potential to improve the flow around this facility. And then we've also had a conversation about the possibility of swapping a lot. The building authority currently owns the lot on the southeast corner of Seventh and Ash, but that is immediately adjacent to the city lot where the stage is. If you swap that for a lot maybe behind Memorial Hall, the city could expand potential uses there. And then, of course, ultimately, we're talking about the future of the authority. If this building ceases to be what it is today, does the authority expand? Does it move somewhere else, or does it dissolve altogether? So they have a vested interest as well. There've been a number of things that people have suggested, people in the community, staff who just sort of looked at this and said, hey, why don't we just do this? And I have called them sort of the easy button solutions, right? So why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? So the first of those is around expanding this building. So if you want to move on to the next slide. So there are some pros to potentially expanding this building. One is no need for demo, which sounds like a good thing. It's also potentially less expensive construction if you can hook on to existing systems in this building. But there are a lot of cons to that idea as well, including the loss of daylight for offices on the north side of the second floor. The space would be limited to essentially a one-time expansion. You really couldn't do anything further without eliminating Campbell Plaza. It would require reconfiguration of the spaces on the third floor that we just invested in, and it does not fundamentally address the security issues or provide space for non-court functions. Another easy button option is what if we just remodeled the Health Department? You know, we have some needs over there, it's not well-laid out, systems aren't great, why can't we just take that building and remodel it? Well, of course, the big pro is it keeps the department in the same location over the long term, but it would still require relocation of the entire department for the short term, however long it would take to do the remodel. It would be very expensive because of the tight construction area, the fact that it has an adjoining building attached to it and would require a full gut of the systems. It keeps the land closest to Santa Fe off the tax rolls. That land probably has the most potential for being a part of downtown, as it were, and it does not address their parking issues or provide them any room for future expansion. Another easy button solution is let's just turn the old jail into something. You know, of course, the big pro is reusing the building, not, not having to pay for the cost of demolition, but we've looked at what something could be. We've looked, other architects have looked, and the current architectural team has looked. We evaluated the potential of a juvenile hall. The North Central Regional Juvenile Authority discarded that idea. They found, they did an architectural study that the county partially funded, and they found that it would cost just as much to renovate that building as it would be to build a brand-new building in Salina if they ever needed that. We've looked at renovating it into office spaces. It's not an office building, and as we have experienced with the former juvenile hall, putting offices into cells is not only not that attractive, it's not that functional. And per the architects, it's not cost-effective. We've evaluated putting a homeless shelter in there. That was one of the, one of the suggestions. One of the big barriers on that is who would run such a facility, right? There's certainly current discussions around homelessness in the community and who needs to take responsibility for that. But in addition, you've got potential neighborhood opposition, and the sizing of that building is probably excessive for what you would need. Also, it was suggested, let's maybe do a food hall in there, turn it into something like the Riverfront Market in Kansas City or, you know, different, the Embarkadero in San Francisco, something like that. The Hyatt Brown, which is a part of the current team, they actually did analysis on that and found that a food hall would not be financially viable. And then I will say, the last bullet on there is the current condition of the building overall. Hannah has some lovely pictures of ice sculptures in the building with the current, or the last round of storms. Another thing that has been suggested is build housing. If you knock down the jail, why don't you just build housing there? Or if you knock down the Health Department, build housing there. So that has certainly some advantages, number one of which is that it's consistent with the neighborhood character, especially at the jail site. It's surrounded by largely single-family residences on three sides. The con, of course, is that there's been significant investment in other housing around the community in the last few years, and the financial analysis also part of the study shows that townhomes on that site are not financially viable. Now, there is a caveat. That same financial study did find that a senior housing facility could be financially viable, given three big ifs. If the county clears the land first, so a site developer is dealing with flat site, if the Health Department moves somewhere else, and if a developer steps forward. So I think one of the questions the County Commission is going to have to resolve moving forward is whether we want to offer that land for a potential senior housing development. Another one of the easy button solutions is give Memorial Hall to someone.
Yeah, and this is kind of what I talked about before. We certainly can do an RFP or something along those lines, but so far, what we've seen is a lot of interest in the building, but not a lot of interest in actually investing in the building, and that is the key difference. It's going to be very difficult to find a developer, as I alluded to earlier, who's going to be willing to invest that significant amount of money, which is probably going to be over and above what it would cost to even do a new build on the building. The building, this is where it's structurally very sound, and that's the disadvantage. There's a lot of concrete in that building and the way it's designed, so that makes it much more difficult. And I pointed this out before, but I think it is very important. Even if we have a developer says they're going to develop it, I think that there needs to be a timeline and requirements along the way so that we don't just keep kicking this can down the road for Memorial Hall because frankly, eventually, it gets to the point, and I don't know when that is, when there's just no way the building's going to be able to be retained. And again, we're not heating the building. The only thing that we really have going on there now is a workshop on the auditorium floor, which is quite odd to say and to see, I must say, but that's the current use of Memorial Hall currently, and that's really the only use. There was no cooling per se of the building. There was this gigantic fan, if you've ever been in the bowels of the building, which is not operable now. But there was window units in the place in the past for a lot of the, I'll call them offices or open spaces along the south side of the building. But that's going to, you know, it's going to be very difficult to find. I would love to have a developer come forward and be able to keep that on the tax rolls. I think that that's a much better use of the building to have it on the tax rolls or even with incentives where at least we get it on the tax rolls after 10 years or something like that. But so far, we have not seen that interest in doing that. And like I said, we, we have to, you know, get some sort of idea because essentially, that building, while it was used in the last 40 years, it was used pretty lightly. And now, like I said, other than facilities storing things in it, it's not being used at all. There is no departments, no activity going on in there. There was gymnastics for a long while, there was the municipal band. I was surprised when I came to Salina that we had a municipal band and it was established by code, so that was a new one for me, and they were located over there for a number of years, but none of those are currently located within the building.
So if we're not going to do any of those, what are we going to do? That leads us into the study that is before you today, and the basic recommendation from our consultant team is around six large changes with lots of associated recommendations around parking, street openings and closings, defining campus, et cetera. Some of those decisions are county-only decisions, such as where to locate a Health Department. Some of them are city-only decisions, such as whether you reopen currently closed streets, whether you change the color of pavement and sidewalks, et cetera. But many of those are joint city-county decisions, such as the future of this building and whether we will co-locate services in another facility. So we have laid out a, is sort of a step-by-step process of the recommendations that are in the study. But if you're like me and you looked at the study, you probably went directly to the cost estimates. And they're big. So the big question that is probably on most people's minds is can we afford any of this? So the very first recommendation is to knock down the old jail, and I will say, yes, absolutely, we can afford that. The county has cash on hand for the cost of knocking down the old jail. The second recommendation is to relocate the Health Department. And we have been in contact with our financial advisor and bond counsel around the potential for financing, the numbers that are in the study, and depending on whether you take the low estimate of the range or the high estimate, and depending on whether you finance it for 10 years or 20 years, the annual payment at current interest rates is going to be between $500,000 and $1 million. And while that is a substantial amount of money, that is something that the county can reasonably afford. That is just about $1 mil, give or take. And so we can certainly come up with some savings within current budgets and juggle some things around and potentially a small tax increase. And yes, the county can redo the Health Department. The third recommendation is to start moving things out of this building into Memorial Hall. If a developer does not step forward to use Memorial Hall for a private use, the recommendation is to reuse Memorial Hall as essentially the new city-county building and turn this building into a judicial center. That is the largest cost by far in the recommendations. I will say it's cheaper than a jail. And I will also say, and I think this is a key point, Sean talked earlier about the fact that these are not one or three or five-year solutions, these are 20-year solutions. And so the timeline on when we would actually need to start investing money in Memorial Hall is about the same timeline of when we would have the current jail bonds paid off. So as I think folks are aware, there is a half-cent sales tax that supports the repayment of the jail bonds. We were very conservative in our estimates of what that would generate, and so we financed the jail for 21 years through 2043. Currently, at the current rate at which people are spending money and paying sales tax in this community, we're on track to pay that bond off by 2034, nine years early. And if things continue to go well, that may actually advance even further. So we're talking probably 2032, 2033, that we would be in a position to start looking at Memorial Hall anyway. That timing potentially syncs up. Of course, sales tax would require a vote, so there's that decision that would have to be made by you all or your successors in these positions and ultimately by the community, whether it was important enough to invest in Memorial Hall to do something at that level. But that is the current recommendation. That would then allow us to knock down the Island Building at 229 North 9th, reconfigure the parking, as I mentioned, turn this building into a judicial center, and ultimately, at the end of the 20-year process, have space to expand the Police Department.
And in regards to that, like I said, we are just now going through, we've developed a plan and met with, met with an architect to try to basically reorganize the space in the existing Police Department. The Police Department is another one of these added ons. If you've ever been in the chief's office, it was bizarre. It used to be the Municipal Court courtroom, and it was just not an efficient use of space over there. And so we're going to be able to address a number of these issues. The evidence one, we're confident we're going to be able to address by moving the evidence loca- location where the evidence is stored into the basement of the municipal court. The municipal court has a very large basement which is available, and so we're, and we're going to bring that to the city commission in about a month or so. The cost estimates will be very low in comparison to the numbers you're seeing here because we're planning to do the work internally, and so we're looking at the cost of sheet rock, paint, and studs. And so we don't have those large costs associated with it. The important point to remember though is while we can address that evidence issue and we can address some of those other shortfalls in the existing building, without additional space, and that space has to come from either where the municipal court is, because under the proposal municipal court gets moved over here, so we have all courts in one building, or the court services area, either one of those two spaces are going to have to eventually be used by the police department to address all of those needs. We just, even with reconfiguring the space, frankly, I've been surprised at how many issues we've been able to address so far, just in this early planning stage with this. And like I said, the fact that we're doing the work internally with city workers and not hiring contractors is going to lead to an enormous savings, but we still cannot address all those issues for the police department without additional space. I know the last thing we want to do is build another new building, so I think that if this proposal goes forward, in the short term, we'll be able to address most of those needs, but not all of them. But then if those spaces become available, then we can address all the long-term needs of the police department.
So from a timeline perspective, and this, we've tweaked some of the things that the consultants laid out in their report for timeline, but in general, we've followed the same path. This year, what we're looking at doing is knocking down the old jail. That is on the county's plate, and we'll talk a little bit more about timing as we wrap up and start to take questions. But it also allows the building authority to reconsider the Ash Street entrance and whether we can make some changes there. The county commission's also going to have to determine whether we want to market the jail land for a senior living facility. Then over the succeeding four years or so, we would relocate the health department. The big decision there is whether we build to suit on the land that the old jail currently occupies, or whether we buy an existing building in the community and renovate. I don't think it's any secret that Salina Family Healthcare currently has plans to relocate, and their building is a potential location, but it really depends on their timeline for their own fundraising, whether that would be something that we could reasonably partner with them to take over that building. And then, as I said, we're talking about six to 10 years out, start moving admin functions from this building and the island to Memorial Hall. There's a note down there at the bottom of this slide. One of the other recommendations from the consultants is that we also find a compatible use that would generate a little income within Memorial Hall. They believe that that building could accommodate all of the city and county admin, non-judicial functions, and still have room left over. So they've made some suggestions, whether that be a gym, whether that be a cafeteria, whether it be some other type of use, we would want to consider that. Then as we go further out into the future, as I talked about, we'd be in a position to knock down the, what we call the island at 229 North 9th, and reconfigure parking to provide additional parking both for Memorial Hall and for the senior center. There'd be the potential to reopen 11th Street through the site of the current jail, but actually closed Park Street to provide additional parking. Then you're talking about turning this building into a judicial center, and again, some of the things that we mentioned earlier around defining the campus feel of this area of town with the surrounding streetscapes, and finally, the police department. So, last slide, how do we move forward? We're really talking about bringing this report back to both of the commissions as well as the building authority separately over the next month, month and a half, and having you dive into it in a little bit longer discussion than we have time to do necessarily today, and potentially adopt the report. We're also looking at severing the electrical connection between court services and the old jail. That is a prerequisite before moving forward with any type of demolition. There's actually an item on the county commission agenda tomorrow morning related to that. Depending on what the commission decides to do, that could either shorten or lengthen that timeframe, but hopefully be able by the end of the spring to get that accomplished, have some discussions with building authority again about reconfiguring the Ash Street entrance this summer. And then the city will need to identify funds for exterior improvements at the police department if we move forward with jail removal. One of the walls doesn't have an exterior finish on it because it was built up against a jail. So we would need to make sure that the city is okay with that plan so that we could finally award the bids for demolition, hopefully by around Thanksgiving and get this knocked down. So that is the overview that we have for the commissions today of the study and how staff is planning to address the study and move forward. We'd be happy to answer questions, and we also, I will note, Jeff Lane from Trainer HL and Cody Parrott from Olson Studios are here as well. They're the principals on this project. You've met them before at the charrettes. They're available for questions as are we. Thank you.
I think I've got one big question to start the whole thing off with. You know, Sean just said a few minutes ago, that Memorial Hall, all the utilities, everything is shut off. And if we leave that Memorial Hall set for very long at all, it's going to deteriorate. So how are we going to take Memorial Hall with no electricity, nothing inside of it, and let it set for 20 years before we decide to do something with it and make it viable to be used?
Well, I don't think the electrical is off.
That is, we decommissioned the boiler, so it is not being heated. It does still have electricity, so to be clear on that, but it does not have heat anymore. The boiler is functional, although it's an older boiler, and with the timelines we're looking at here, that's going to be an additional cost probably because the boiler is obviously going to be deteriorating in the timeline. But there is still electricity located over there.
But just electricity isn't going to take it to the point where if we let it set for that length of time and make it usable within that time, you know, that 20 years, I just, you know, if we leave it set that long and not use it for anything, then, I mean, I don't see it worth trying to even renovate. I mean, look at some of the other buildings we've got in town here, I mean.
Yeah, well, so I'll say the city staff currently, as Sean mentioned, they do have some maintenance functions over there. So they are in and out of the building. It's not totally abandoned. They do keep it up. And remember, we're talking not about 20 years before we would do something with it, but that would be more of that 10-year window. So hopefully, we can limp it along until then and then be able to do the rehab.
My only experience with old buildings is the Stiefel Building when I was a city commissioner, and I know that at that time, we had no clue what to do with it. We just knew that it was a great building and an asset to downtown. The city did invest in a roof at least to keep it from dripping, because we knew that that would deteriorate the building. So how is the roof on Memorial Hall?
So Troy, do you want to talk about that a little? There, we are in the process, at least on the police and municipal court, of putting new roofs on them. I don't know what their current status is of the roof for Memorial.
So the south end of lower portion of the roof was put on a year and a half ago. The upper portions of the TPO roof's about 15 years old. So the upper roof, we'll need to have something done with it in the next three to five years. When it comes to the building maintenance itself, we do operate out of it. We use it for a workshop, so it is on a regular maintenance schedule. We're in and out of it. If there's some issues that need to be resolved, we do take care of them.
Great. To get back to your concern, I think that the roof would be my biggest concern. That would make the building deteriorate faster than anything, so.
Good.
Well, I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around if we move all the administration offices out of this building, what's going to occupy this building?
That's a great question, Commissioner. So this would be a judicial center, which would be not only the current configuration of district court, but also we would bring court services and community corrections into this building, hopefully municipal court into this building and their court services. And then we are hoping that we could convince perhaps state parole and/or the public defender's office to locate in this building as well. So you would really have a comprehensive judicial center for the community in one location.
Moving the police department wasn't part of that equation, was it?
No, so the police department, in this vision, the police department would stay in its current location, but expand into either where court services currently is or into where municipal court currently is.
And that room for expansions, what would allow us to address that last 30% of the needs? Again, we're able to address a lot of those needs, particularly the most pressing being evidence, by utilizing the existing municipal court basement. But a lot of these other needs, such as maintaining offices for the detectives and otherwise, which are very important while they're doing investigations, the only way we're going to be able to meet that need is with additional space. That additional space is either going to have to come from court services, and that would be available when they moved over here to be part of the judicial center, or from municipal court when it moves over here. We didn't really look at building a new police station just due to the cost and locations and everything else, so we were really trying to address the police needs in both the short term, and we're able to do that with these efforts we're currently undertaking, but also look at longer term to address those needs. But in order to address those long-term needs, it would require some additional space.
And when you say court services, you mean the sheriff's space, the sheriff's office space that they vacated? I just.
Yeah, they're located where the sheriff used to be.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So the court services is the old sheriff's space, so we would take over the entire building and municipal court building at that time with the police department.
So with the judicial center here, who would be the owner of that? City, county, or would there be a building authority still that would be the owner of this facility?
So I think, again, I think that's a great question of why we wanted the building authority to be part of this conversation, is I can envision a couple of different scenarios, right? Currently, the city of Salina owns Memorial Hall. If that becomes the new city-county building, does the building authority move over there? Does the city transfer ownership of that building? Does this building then become a county building? Does the building authority expand and cover both buildings? There would obviously be a different distribution of space, but the current building authority agreement provides for shifting the percentages. Most of what would be here in this vision of a judicial center would be county functions, but if municipal court moved in, obviously, there would be a little bit that's city. And if some of the state functions, à la public defender, state parole moved in, they would be renters in the building.
Has there been an analysis done on the cost, and again, it depends on what you do to Memorial Hall, what the cost to renovate Memorial Hall is versus building new on the jail site? And that leads me to my second question. What's the square footage of the jail site footprint, including area for parking versus Memorial Hall?
I don't know the exact square footage off the top of my head, but that site is slightly smaller than Memorial Hall in terms of if you took it down and re-put the street back through there, it would be slightly smaller because it's a smaller block than the block that Memorial Hall sits on. There has not been an analysis of doing, I don't believe there's been a cost analysis of building an entirely new city-county building where the old jail is now versus Memorial Hall. I would assume it would be slightly less expensive because the Memorial Hall project is very expensive, but then it also begs the question of, and so what do you do with Memorial Hall? So those are the kinds of things that I think are great questions that we can address moving forward. I mean, it is obviously a conversation for the city commission to be had around that as you move forward.
Who gets the tank?
I don't think the tank was envisioned to move. In fact, I believe Cody designed a park around the tank in his visions.
There's a lot of thought has to be given to this. I mean, I guess what bothers me is that nobody's staying in the same spot. We're moving everybody, it seems like, you know? I mean, it just seems to be like, from a city standpoint, except for the police station, we're okay here. So why we're looking to move and do some things, I'm not 100% sure, you know? I think the city of Salina would be happy to remain in this building and then figure out what we need to do with the police station, but it.
Well, we could make you unhappy to remain in this building, depending on what we end up putting down our half of it.
We're going to be good neighbors.
Yes. No, I think those are great questions. Absolutely.
And this is really intended to spur this conversation because, you know, frankly, the, you know, the 600-pound gorilla in the room is Memorial Hall, what are we going to do with it? Because eventually, and I can't tell you when that is, eventually, we're just going to have to say, okay, it can't go forward, and then we're going to have to demo it. And we've all experienced how enjoyable it is to demo large buildings, them with the jail coming up. There's, the city has had experiences, as you all know, with large demolitions, and they're very expensive. But it's even more painful when you're looking at really a building with such history and people who very much, everybody wants to save Memorial Hall, but, and everybody comes up with some of these ideas, but this is one of the few ways that we've been able to see to actually, quote, "save Memorial Hall" and address some of the needs in spite of the very, very large cost. Because I'm usually Mr. "That's way too expensive," but we took the input from the meetings and everything else and really, again, tried to look long-term. This building is adequate for city needs right now, but we also have to look for that longer-term aspect. And when I mean a lot longer term, not just 10 years, we're talking 20 and 30 years. And if the city continues to be as successful as it has been, there's going to be a need for expansion, and we're going to be facing a greater space challenge than even the county. So I think in the short term, yes, the city does not have space needs, but I think in the much longer term, from a strategic level, we're going to have to look at what the needs are going to be in the future. And at least under this option, as expensive as it is, it gives a lot more options for the future.
Well, and I know when city manager Scragg was here, you know, we talked about, we'd give that building to somebody, and I'm guessing our interim city manager feels the same way if somebody had a plan for it, and again, we haven't found that. I guess, in my way of thinking, I kind of need to know what the cost to renovate Memorial Hall is to a certain extent, depending on what we're doing versus a new build. And the reason I say that is if it's twice as much, maybe we do a sales tax, we do something and let the voters decide. I mean, because it's hard for me to say, I'm going to spend twice as much. I mean, because it's hard for me to say, I'm going to spend twice as much money to save Memorial Hall and, you know, then be ridiculed by the taxpayer for doing that. So I guess it's hard for me to make a decision, not knowing the cost variance.
I kind of hope we're not looking at, you know, like I said earlier, you know, I don't want to be the one that said, "I told you so," but I still say if we let that building set for that type, that length of time and not use it and not do anything with it, that we're going to, it's going to deteriorate more. Have we even looked at maybe going either regionally or nationally, you know, to advertise this building, to see if there's anybody that would be interested outside that would come in and, you know, say, hey, maybe, you know, we'd love to come in and say, and do something with this, or...
It certainly remains an option. This is why we're bringing this to you, to really promote this. It certainly is an option to do an RFP, to get responses for Memorial Hall, to see that. Hopefully, we would get a positive response. It's not like we have to move into Memorial Hall. What we're trying to do and looking at this study was try to address those, those kind of counterpressuring needs, one being, well, the needs of the county, the needs of the police department, and the goal of trying to, quote, "save Memorial Hall." If we could find a developer who's going to commit, and not just somebody who's going to say they're commit, who agrees to commit to a timeline, that would be great for Memorial Hall, and we would then be able to, quote, "save Memorial Hall." I'd love to eventually get it back on the tax rolls or to have it generating revenue or people in it, more people in the downtown. But so far, we have not seen that.
No, at this point, we haven't done a national call. We haven't done an RFP. We haven't sent that out. We certainly could do that. I think we can do both. I mean, I think we could move forward with the plan where there may be a reuse kind of in the offing, but we could do an RFP to see. I will tell you that I've taken lots of people through the building, and generally, I'm the one that gets to do that with Troy. And to a T, everybody says, "This is a great building, it's way too much for us to go through that process." But we could do that. I mean, in the, you know, if the city commission gave us a direction to do that, we could do that here pretty quickly. We could get an RFP out and see what happens. I mean, I think the key point here is we're not making a decision for today, we're making a decision for six or seven years from now. Lots of things are going to have to happen in between there, lots of conversations about how the building is funded, whether we, I mean, I think you're exactly right, Commissioner Hoppe, we have to determine whether we think it's a good idea to, I mean, there's still a site there. We could tear the building down and build a brand-new building in that location. I think we would have to get some more detailed guidance on what we think the total cost is going to be. I mean, this study says, you know, $50, $60 million. I'm not sure that there's an appetite in this community for us to do that. There may be more appetite to tear it down and build something new in that location. So I think a lot of things can happen. We're just trying to get the ball rolling in some direction, if that makes sense. And just to be clear, the building has been empty for a number of years. We're, it's not, we're not changing the status. It's been several years where it's been sitting in the current condition. So I don't, we don't have any, we don't have any thought that it's deteriorating further. If we did, we would be taking another look or having a harder conversation about what we need to do to maintain it so that we can have a plan with it in the future.
Well, several years ago, I was on the city commission, and I remember that Hutton had came forward with a plan at one time and presented a plan, or they had a plan out there for it.
Lots of conversations with Hutton, no takers. I mean, they just didn't have any, that plan did not work out.
If you lose Memorial Hall to a private developer, though, you still need to build another building for the office space that the city and county would have to move.
It would certainly change the plan for how we address city and county space in the future. And it may make other parts of this plan more viable. I mean, it may, it may make us think differently about adding on to this building, as you said, building something in the jail site. I mean, yeah, it would certainly shift our thoughts about how we move forward.
Yeah, I mean, and again, I, you know, there is room to add on to this building, but then you run into, you know, parking becomes a big concern. You know, we'd have to figure out a place for additional parking if this, if this facility's expanded, so.
You know, I addressed Commissioner Hoppe's concern, and I agree, moving everybody to one building and doing this, but a judicial system center isn't new. It was proposed many years ago, failed, and it included the jail and all of the judicial system, as Phil outlined. And at a cost, then, much less than what we paid to do the jail currently, that is only the jail. It's a beautiful site, but it's only the jail. And what, one thing we have to remember is that even though the county is responsible for the costs of court services and some of those other entities, the 90% of the people that come to the judicial services are, live in the city of Salina limits. They don't live outside of city limits. So I just want to, you know, I realize that moving everything around is hard, and the city is happy here or whatever, but we have to remember that taxpayers are utilizing the judicial system in all avenues, and they reside in the city of Salina.
I think one nice thing about this is that you're grouping services together. It would be nice to describe it as public-facing services in one place. When I first moved here, I went to go rent some space for a party for our kids and found out that, well, no, it's in the city park, but it's a county, and I was running all around town. I said, "It's the same city." I mean, it's not like we're talking, you know, something that's 15 miles apart here. Those types of services would be nice. I don't know if there's other options for grouping those services, but, I mean, the idea behind it is nice and, you know, having senior services, health services, I mean, the plan is nice, the price is high, but the plan is real nice. I don't know how you, cities allowed to buy lottery tickets?
Well, I just don't think that we need to focus the space needs, the city and county, around saving the 100-year-old Memorial Hall. Sure, we'd like to find a use for it, but functionally, I don't think it should revolve around that. A couple of years ago, when I was on the building authority, I think I'm on the building authority again this year, we had plans presented to expand this building. And I just wonder how that comes into the equation. Some of it was, seemed pretty feasible and sensible to put an addition on going to the north. And it seemed like that, well, once we got the courtrooms all done, that kind of, I think, went from out to the courtrooms, and then it fell off, so.
I think with that, that there's...
On that, we looked at that extension, because if I remember right, you were talking about there's an extension we're looking at to the, to the north and possibly putting the court, some courtrooms and stuff in there, plus a, I want to say a Sally Port or elevator to bring inmates up, stuff like that. And then, that's when, I believe, I may be wrong, but I want to say, that's about the time when the jail got approved, to sit there and be building over there. Then we're looking at different places, then we thought, well, court services then could occupy the sheriff's offices area as a place to relocate, which was cheaper than building a whole new section to the, I want to say, north of this building.
Is the jail, the old jail site, large enough to accommodate a building, a larger building that would house both health and citizen-facing services and maybe even some offices?
Yes, it would be, at that point, a multi-story building.
And we don't have any cost for that. I mean, so certainly, as you go vertical and the higher you go up, it's certainly a possibility, but we don't have any cost for that to be able to compare, so that's certainly something we could look at. Because obviously, like I said, this is the start of the conversation. It's not, you know, I was joking, telling people, "Well, come in here and say, oh, by the way, the contracts have been signed and work starts next Monday." No, 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 no. This is a long-term issue and just the real start of that conversation.
Is the reason for not going vertical because it's otherwise in a residential neighborhood?
The reason, so I would say that's one reason. It's, neighborhood character is certainly something I think we'd want to consider. It's also the joy of elevators.
Yeah, and cost.
Which we've certainly experienced in this building. The building authority has recently been through that. But, I mean, yeah, no reason not to consider it.
So how far along in how much study has there been in cost estimates on Memorial Hall? I can see it practical to do that in phases. You know, you stated you'd be building a, building within the building. I just can't see us doing the whole thing at once.
Oh, yeah, fair point. It's a very large number. I'm sure Jeff could address how those cost estimates within the study were developed, but I will say, these are, Jeff's going to correct me with real terms, but architects do cost estimates in phases, and these are very high-level estimates. These are not the, you know, building plan level estimates, so.
That's great, Phil. I think what I would share with you as it relates to Memorial Hall is there's a couple things that are happening. So the building's a great building. You've had a great conversation about it. There's code, there's fire sprinkler, and there's fire alarm pieces, so life safety pieces. So once you actually start doing a portion, whatever that portion looks like, you then have to circle back and actually bring that building up to speed, whether that's also ADA and those types of things. So to piecemeal it, you're right, you can do that. So you could take a portion, say 10,000 square feet, and go, "I'm going to go do that. And that's what I'm going to do today or this year," and I'm going to then go and move a department or move a group into that space. But also, in the same vein, you've got to turn around, because I could be wrong, but most of the time, local authorities come back and say, "All right, well, how's, now that it's occupied fully by an entity, how do you, how do you handle the code and life safety pieces within that building that aren't being occupied?" So we'd have to still do some work in those areas. So with it related to the cost estimate, what we were intending is to give you an order of magnitude. And you can go break that down and do certain things and think about it differently. And I think that's actually a really, really good way to do it. It's just recognize that when you do that, there's also some other costs that may be incurred throughout the rest of the building, just to get it brought up to a place that can be functional. Does that make sense? Great. Did I answer your question?
Didn't tell me how much it's going to cost.
And, well, I think what I shared in the estimate was somewhere in the 50 to 60 range all-in, and that's to completely finish out that space, to do the things that we've talked about within the master plan. To piecemeal that, again, like I said, if you're going to go do 10,000 square feet, it depends on where you're going to do that 10,000 square feet, right? And then what, what you're going to use. So if you open up that entry space and say, "That's going to be entry for everything, no matter what we do," then we're going to bring that entry space up to, up to speed to what it needs to be. And it may be that it's just for staff right now and not public, because we're, we're just bringing staff in. The other piece is it relates to the entry. If you choose to take some of the options to actually bring a developer in to think about that space a little differently, now, how do we, how do we navigate that? Because we don't want public that may be going to a food hall, for instance, to be navigating over here to private office space that's city or county. So all those things, I think, would have to be thought through, as Phil has stated, to be able to think about how that works from a, from a phasing perspective.
What's the total square footage of Memorial Hall? I don't remember from, and again, it's hard...
No, I think it's about 64 to 70,000 square feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, if there are no other questions at this time, I think the city commission has another meeting to start here shortly. So I want to thank both commissions and the building authority for your attention today and your very good questions. And we will be, as I said earlier, bringing this back to each of the commissions separately over the next several weeks, and Sean and I will work together and incorporate some of the things that you've asked for.
If there's nothing further, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
First, second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? I guess we're out of here. Thank you.
Thank you.